I am really excited about this. So, Matt and I had the kickoff call with them. I'm gonna walk through the scope of work in terms of what we're doing and when we're doing it. But first, I'd like to use their deck just to walk through content so that you have a better idea, a little more granular idea of what to expect from our process. So, I'm actually going to try to get motion sickness here. I'm gonna skip to the bottom of the slides and then I'm gonna come back. I'm gonna start right here. And the reason I'm doing this is to give you some context. So, they've done this work in about 1,300 districts and the intent is to wind up with something like this. What is this, you ask? So, this is what they would describe as the North Star. And this would be the set of knowledge, skills, and abilities that our community identifies. They would like to have graduates aspire to as they walk across the stage. What does that mean for us? Well, when we set these things as a community, it allows us to backward map from 12th to 11th to 10th to 7th to 3rd to kindergarten and start to ask ourselves, how do we see those things manifested in our current curricular delivery and in our classrooms? I've had the opportunity to talk to multiple schools who've gone through this. Some have seen what I would consider to be incremental change as a part of this. Some have seen transformational change in their district. And part of it is how much we own it, how much we have the community invest in it, and how much flexibility and perhaps out-of-the-box thinking we're willing to consider as we go through it. So now, let me take you back up to the top and walk you through it. I want you to start with the end in mind there. So, who's Batel that we're bringing in? Batel is a not-for-profit that, in this case, works very closely. They've got a lot of different components of the Batel organization. Batel for Kids is working very, very closely with EdLeader 21 and really focusing on what they think 21st century education ought to look like. And so, they've refined this process and they've worked with 1,300 school districts. Like I said, I've had a chance to talk to quite a few of them about the work that they've done. I'll tell you in a moment, you know, some of the things that they've shared with us. My first reaction was gulp, but hold on to that because they've got a plan for it. So, their goal is to try to help districts help themselves determine what's next for them. And they've really developed a nice process to do that. So, one of the things that they talk a lot about is that when we talk about what we expect kids to do right now, the things that we expect them to do to graduate, I take four years of math and three years of science and three years of social studies and two years of English and whatever else it is that we decide we want kids to take. So, very, very content-focused. And they said, yes, content is a part of it. We want to think about the what kids know, but we also want to think about the how and the why. And so, you see those four Cs of the 21st century education that we've been talking about for almost two decades now, communication, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking. Those are the things that so frequently we hear from the business world that kids need to have. They don't talk about the content and the what. They talk about how the kids interact when they're come to work for them and really what's the why behind it. Things that they're gonna focus on as we go through the process, this deeper learning piece, understanding, yes, we need rigorous content. This really works well with some of the focuses that we've had for the district. Remember our conversation about equal opportunity schools and our desire to get all children, regardless of the demographic category that they fall into, take rigorous courses at the high school level, whether those be AP or honors classes or Kirkwood Community College classes, University of Iowa classes. So, that fits right in. And then, how do you blend those 21st century skills into that rigorous content so that kids are really ready for the application process? They talked to us at length about the mindset piece. If you're familiar with Carol Drexler's work, you know that we come in with a growth mindset, that we're open-minded. And this, I think, one of the things that really struck us when we looked at this as an opportunity for our community as a whole is this intentional outcome of the community's vision for our students. Recognizing that there are many visions in the community and how do we blend those together that we have one consensus opinion about where we want students to go. Now, we talked about this earlier. We were gonna talk about having our Saturday session and working on mission and vision. And after I sat down with these folks and listened to them, I thought, you know, I think it's really important for us to just take a short pause on setting that vision and that mission statement for the district because you're going to hear when we talk about the process for who's involved with this, that this idea of this authentic vision is really a reflection of what the community thinks. I think this group will really give us an opportunity to get some high-level detailed feedback from a lot of segments of our community and then help use that to drive the vision and the mission statement for the district. So, these are the six things that they talked about from an intentionality standpoint, about what they want to do when they come in and engage our community. I guess you can ask me questions all the way along here. This was a gulp piece for me. So, how many of you, I can't remember how many of you sat through our community engagement process when we went through the last one, when we did our FMP. Okay, so if you did, those were large-scale meetings. We were at Parkview Church. We were at our high schools. We were all over the district. Lots of people sitting at lots of tables and having lots of conversation. So, when we started talking about this, they said, okay, we're gonna put together this design team. And I said, okay, how big is it? Oh, you know, it could be, you know, a handful of people or it could be 150. And I thought, we're going to actually do kind of mission envisioning work with 150 people? Yep, super confident. He said, we've done it before. He needed a couple of districts to talk to. I reached out to them and they said, yes, indeed. And then, one of the individuals in particular, he said, you know, 150 sounds like a lot of people until you start to look at this. So, if we need multiple junior high kids, multiple high school kids, kids from Transition Services Center, kids from Taten, kids who graduated from the district and who are now employed or at Kirkwood or at University of Iowa, that's a large chunk of kids. We need some elementary, junior high, and high school educators, some elementary, junior high, and high school administrators, some district-level leaders, some school board members. We're only on the right-hand side of it. Some family members. Now, we need our external stakeholders. We need our faith leaders in there. We need business leaders, higher ed, Kirkwood, University of Iowa. We need UAY. We need these other community members. You get to 150 people pretty quick. So, I understand a little bit better now and even though, like I said, it was a gulp moment for me when he said we could do it with 150, they have a really deliberate process for doing it and I think that will really help because they are going to facilitate the meeting process. How do we select? We are actually working on that right now and we're gonna use a nomination process.
We have to, where more people?
Exactly. And then, we'll have to go through a selection process. So, for instance, I met with ICAD and they're really interested in helping us reach out to the business community. And they had identified about 30 people before I left the room with them. And I said, well, you can't seat all 30 of those people at the table. You don't get that many slots. So, we're actually looking at over-nominating. And part of the rationale for that is we're looking at four meetings and I'll walk you through that. We wanna make sure that people can commit to attend all four meetings.
That's right.
I think it's really important for coherence that we can do that. So, you know, from a social contract standpoint, we wanna make sure that we have more people identified so that we can get those folks that can really commit to being there for all four meetings. So, we're gonna use both a direct and a referential process for developing pools of potential candidates in each of these fields. We're working with building administrators right now. For instance, from the student perspective, I don't want 30 kids from student council. I love my student council kids and I want some of them there, but I want a broad cross-spectrum of students who are present. Same thing with our educators. You know, I probably want some teachers of the year, but maybe some folks that aren't in that category. So, we wanna make sure that we get a good cross-spectrum in each of those areas. Higher ed, I've already reached out to Dame Clay and the president's office at the university who might be interested there. I've reached out to Lori in terms of, is it someone from Kirkwood up there? Is it someone from Kirkwood down here? So, we're starting that conversation. But I presume that we will have more people who would like to be at the table than can actually be at the table. Not a bad thing because we're gonna meet on a monthly basis and I'll walk you through what those meetings look like. And between those meetings, there's an expectation that we will have engagement opportunities. So, we will be reaching out, hey, here's a direct question that we have. Can we respond to this short handful of survey questions? So, we can take that data and take it back to the next meeting. So, there'll be multiple opportunities for other community members to provide feedback that the group can then take in and digest and make it part of our board. So, this is their four-step process. We plan, activate, and set it up. We go through the creation process and then the board goes through the adoption process. What do the meetings look like? And this is a real broad piece of it. I've got some other material that they've shared that helped us drill down. But the first meeting is really understanding how the world has changed. And in this particular meeting, they work with the students separately and the adults separately. But for meetings two, three, and four, everybody's together. And then, it's that opportunity to come up with a community decision about what we think are those essential skills and habits of mind and then how we bring them together. And one of the things that they'll tell you is that when you look at all of those portraits in all of those communities, if you think about it as a Venn diagram, there are a lot of things that are common to all districts, things that we think kids should know and be able to do. But every community has its uniqueness to it and that brings out some other demands that the community has for our graduates that'll be separate and distinct from what you might find in other areas. And then, finally, that fourth piece, and this is where the obligation comes in from us. They will tell us, based on the community input, that this is what your portrait should look like and these are the kinds of things that you should do. It can either wind up being a superpo poster that we put up on the wall or it can actually become what we do as a district. And so, that fourth piece really becomes that heavy lifting for us. But what they wanna do is they wanna leave us with some forward momentum.
So, when we talk about how to make it a reality, isn't just the school district that's committing to making this happen? Or are we getting kind of the commitments from business community and higher ed and all those?
And that's why they want to have them in the room. So, for instance, if we decide that exposure to the real-world workplace is an important part of our portrait of a graduate, that our students have had some kind of authentic experiences on the job, we can't do that if the business community isn't creating job shadowing and internship opportunities for our kids. They have to be a partner with us, right? If social-emotional learning is a key component of our expectations, that we have resilient and persistent students that graduate, our social service agencies are gonna have to be a part of that solution.
So, back to who's on the committee? I mean, people who have the ability to commit to doing this work?
Absolutely. We'll be, so for instance, if we're looking for somebody from, I mentioned UAY. We'll look for someone from a leadership role there that can understand what they can bring to the table for us. And this, I think, is something that we know, but something that they said they spend time being very deliberate about. But, you know, I always say that one of the challenges that we have in education is that all parents and actually all community members consider themselves to be experts in school, but their contextual reference is the school that they experienced, which is something that happened for some of us a long time ago. And then, we think how well that worked for us and so, we wanna replicate that experience for our kids. What's hard for us as parents to do is represent that that experience served us well 30 or 40 years ago, but may not be serving our students well today. And so, we have to, again, go back to that growth mindset piece and recognize that as our landscape changes and shifts, our schooling needs to change and shift to go along with it. So, again, I said that, you know, they're gonna look at changing workforce needs. They're gonna look at societal changes. Technology, obviously, an important part of this and how do you make meaning from it? And then, that role of relationships. And then, again, that gets to that momentum piece and bringing all those disparate groups together. I think I covered that piece. So, things that they're going to do for us is they help us from a communication standpoint. They help us get the message out. This is something that they've already started working with Kristin and I on so we can put those pieces together. They're available to work with our team and to work with the board as necessary. And then, they've got all kinds of components. I said in between times, we'll do some survey work. They've got already stems for those because they've been through this with so many other districts that they know how to tease that information out from the public. So, you know, one of the things to remember is, you know, there's a cost associated with this. We've been very fortunate. The University of Iowa and the president's office have committed to this. They're funding the bulk of this for us and that's a real plus for us. And these are some of the things that we'll get from them. I showed you these before. Maybe this has a little bit more relevance now because we've gone through it to really understand what do these look like and why are we going through these and what are we trying to set from it? And so, this is just a smattering of schools from our own country and some of the portraits that they've set for themselves and the expectations that they have for their students as they graduate. And so, one of the things that they look at is the student and we're doing a portrait of a graduate. Just so you're aware of this, there are two other components that they look at. And they look at the educator and they look at the system. So, we have not contracted for this with them, but it's something that if we go through this process and find success with it and decide we would like to do more with them, once you know what a 21st century student looks like at portrait of a graduate, then the next question is, what does the portrait of the educator who works in the classroom with those students look like? And so, they'll also do a portrait of an educator, you know, if the district is interested. And then, finally, that last one, the system. So, if we know what the student should look like, what they should know and be able to do, we know what the history of the classroom should look like and how they should work with students, what is the system, what is the board office and the district office look like in terms of a support structure to help the students and the staff as they go through this process?
And that system component, is that where climate, culture?
They look at the whole thing. And they look at, from a structural standpoint, how your district is aligned, purpose and intentionality behind the work that you do.
I don't know how you do just the student.
Without doing those other pieces?
Yeah, I don't get how you can be successful without addressing those other pieces.
They will, essentially, when they go through and set the portrait of a graduate, there are some clear expectations about what you expect from your teachers and what you expect from the district. This goes into a little bit more depth than in terms of not only what you expect from the teacher, but then how you define the process of hiring, your expectations and things like that.
I think it's quite transformative to do all three.
You said the university is footing the bill. So, I would imagine the College of Education is interested?
Dame Clay is super interested in this, yes. We just talked about it, what day is it? Tuesday, yesterday, Monday, yeah.
So, how much bill is the university?
They are paying $28,000. It's a $33,000 bill. Ours, our commitment is $5,000. Their commitment is $28,500.
Is that the cost just for the student portion of it?
Yes, it is.
Will they foot equally if we want to pay our guests?
I didn't ask that.
Well, let's keep doing this and see how successful it is. Honestly, you could probably get businesses who participate in this first round willing to put money into this system.
I think if it's not just a cool photo or poster that goes on the wall, but we actually operationalize it and start to see it, I think they're gonna be far more interested in what comes next.
Yeah, that's not, you know, certainly a lot of money for the university nor a lot of businesses in our area that donate.
Well, I think if it's the College of Ed, they would have a real interest in at least the educator profile.
And here's the educator piece. So, these are the kinds of things that they talk about that they need to do.
That's the cultural aspect.
Right. And then, how is it operationally defined inside your district? And just real quickly, this is what they're looking at from a system standpoint. So, your visionary leadership and what does the ecosystem look like? You're carrying a responsive culture and then empower workforce, et cetera. And then, they help you go through an operationalization.
So, Steve, is Batel going to do the analysis of the four meetings?
Yes. What they do is they help us facilitate the meetings and then they help compile and digest the data for us.
Do we get to pick who from Batel actually leads the facilitation discussions? It matters.
Yes.
Especially if we're talking to the group of 150. I'm assuming they've got some methodology, work small group, whatever, blah, blah, blah. But, I mean, if you've got a bad facilitator, it's not a good experience.
They assigned, you know, somebody was given to us as the lead. And one of the things that I did not...
Are you Matt's person?
Matt and I had an intro conversation with him. Dynamic, super excited and passionate.
I mean, it just has to be someone that fits our community.
Yeah. One of the things that I didn't do, which I can certainly do, is I talked to him about which other districts he's led and see if I can talk to him.
Does any hint of inauthenticity or, you know, this, for this kind of big community thing, it really, really, really matters. Thank you.
Yeah. I can say that the two folks that were on the phone call with us are both, one of them was, I think he's the data guy and the other guy's the out-front personality.
Would they be offended if we asked to have more people lead the facilitator?
I don't think so, not at all. I didn't, you wouldn't think so.
More people than, I didn't get me.
But I mean, I would love to meet who they've assigned to us.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think that's a bad...
I don't think he'd have any issue with that at all.
I think that'd be a really good idea.
Sure. Yeah. We can definitely set that up. So, we're excited about it from a scope work standpoint. Just give you a real quick, broad overview here. They've already met with our leadership team and now we're gonna start...
So, the leadership team, is that the Innovation in Education, the ICAD group?
No, that's our district leadership team.
Thank you.
So, they met with Matt and I. They're gonna meet with the entire cabinet on January 24th. And then, we'll start again our first meeting. We're looking at for February and that's our, we're scheduling. We're looking at them from 4:30 to 6:00. We've had lots of dialogue on what time of the day works best. These are the kinds of things that we're gonna do as part of it.
So, we'll have the 150 people by this date?
Oh, are you, can I say the word?
Yep.
We're already working on it.
We're already working on it. Let me put it like this. When we got them on the phone, they put us in the cannon and lit the fuse. They, like I said, there's a lot of passion on their point and they wanna get this done. They think it's important for the district to have this by the end of the school year, that is by June, that we have all the work done. You know, as they said to us, if you're gonna do this, then you need to have it done by the end of the year because you don't want a break and you don't wanna do it all the time.
Yeah, you need to get it done before summer or else reconvene stuff.
Yeah, exactly. And they said, you wanna have enough time in between because if you need to reach out to the community and you need to get some of that survey information, you got some gap.
Do we think we can hit this?
We do.
We just talked about PMG doing a monocle and doing a...
We are. That doesn't mean we have to do it slow.
Okay.
I said there were a couple of gulp moments when Matt and I were meeting.
I'm just, I mean, you're, the type of people you're trying to get in this design team and asking them to be able to commit to these work sessions and stuff in between. I mean, we probably have some people self-selecting out that you want.
We probably will.
Because it's just not enough time for them to do it.
We're working with Kristin. We actually wanna have, Kim's been super helpful with this too from a communication standpoint. We wanna have the graphics ready to go, the time, the date, the location, and have all of that ready to go so that we send the invites out and we seek the commitment. It's not squishy. People know exactly what we want from them.
Yeah, I believe our known dates are, yeah, I mean...
And they were really helpful in helping us think about time. You know, if you want the business community to commit, I talk sometimes to get them to be able to do it during the workday. If you want your students...
More speed at 7:00 AM.
Hey, hey, hey.
Sorry, what did you do though? Is that people don't, they go, what made you go to work?
If you want kids to commit, they talked about sometimes how hard it is for kids to opt out of being in the school, especially depending on the time of the year, finals, all the rest of that stuff that comes around. So, after a lot of debate with them, we settled on the 4:00 to 6:30 time slot in the afternoon in the hopes that there are as few conflicts as possible going through there. There's no one magic time, but that seemed to be the best choice. So, they've already scoped out, like I said, the meetings for us. What's February gonna look like, March, April, May? So, that gives us the opportunity to know what it is we're going to do and when we're going to do it. They're confident that they can deliver the product for us at the, no later than the end of June so that we have it for our internal work over the course of the summer. So, they're...
What meeting locations are you looking at?
We're looking at using all three of the high schools. So, we wanna rotate. We're gonna have a meeting in West, a meeting in City, a meeting in Liberty, and then one meeting here. So, that way, we have equal representation and that there's some level of convenience for some of the folks and inconvenience as we go into all three quadrant sections of the district.
So, you, by the end of this month, so next week essentially?
What's that, invitations?
You'll have the 150 people identified, invitations out.
You look so skeptical.
I'm very appreciative of the urgency, if I put it that way.
Well, you know, one of the...
I'm just afraid that we're getting, I'm afraid we're not gonna get the participation that we want because of how fast we're trying to set this team up.
Well, remember, we're not asking them to commit to doing anything tomorrow. Our first meeting, we looked at, sorry, I didn't share that with you. We are looking at the fourth Monday of the month in February, April, and May. And because of spring break, it'll be the fourth Wednesday of the month in March.
Okay. That's better. It's not like you're trying to get the first...
Exactly. I don't want them to commit to next week. So, we want the invitation out.
Yeah.
And we want the dates known, locations known, et cetera, so that we can get people to commit.
So, do we need to sign who from the boards participating in this?
That'll be part of the process, yep. You cannot all sit at the table. I don't have enough seats for all of you.
And we have to have a public agenda and all that stuff. So, do we have to limit it to three?
No more than.
Yeah.
I don't think it's cutting us back.
I will tell you this.
Well, they recommended for every school-based person we have, and you guys count the school-based people, that we needed an outside person, right? And so, that doesn't limit our administrators.
And best practice is actually a two-to-one outside to inside. Because if you really want this, they said, if you want this to be not only perceived but truly a representation of what the community wants, you can't just stack it with a bunch of school district people. And so, we're actually looking at a large number of students. We wanna have about 30 kids on the group there. And then, we're kinda considering them on the, even though they're inside the system, they're students, so we're not counting them as the inside-outside. And then, we're looking at two-to-one from outside to inside. So, that limits the number of teachers, principals, et cetera.
So, how many can we have more of?
No more than three.
And is that too many?
We could take three. We could take three. You'll participate right along with the community members. So, all of the engagement work that you do at the meeting and you have the survey, and then the survey work in between, everybody will have the opportunity to do it. This is really kind of a Knights of the Round Table idea that we sit with the community members. We sit with the students. Everybody has an equal voice in the process.
So, I guess, you know, looking at the groups, then I think it's important that we try to get, you know, a representative, that that group looks like our community.
That's absolutely, that's absolutely what we're looking at.
A lot of those group, you know, the typical folks you go to probably don't know, you know, really look like our community.
Well, for instance, you've been to our PSYAC meetings, right? So, our school improvement advisory committee meetings, we try to recruit from multiple segments in the community. We struggle to get those seats filled. And I think part of that not only is timing of the meetings and things like that, but it's the purposefulness of it. So, we're hoping that this is a really inspirational process and that when people understand how the work is constituted and the role that they're gonna have in it, we hope that that's motivational and helps us make sure that we have a cross-sectional representation. So, I'm really excited about it, probably tell that.
So, when do we get the next update?
As we meet with them and get information from them, we will be starting to provide you actually written updates because, you know, waiting in between board meetings and work sessions, I think we're gonna find as we get into it is too long to wait for you to be up to speed on what's going on. So, the one thing that they did share with us is that they've honed their communication process. So, I've already got Kristin connected with the gentleman that we're working with. He's already starting to feed her some of the communication tools that they use. He sent kind of a content of what the introductory email should look like with the idea that now we have to personalize it. What does it sound like in an Iowa City voice and get that put together? So, she's already working on that. I think once we get the folks engaged, then I think like a flywheel, it will start to turn itself. So, I think Matt and I have a lot of work to do in the next couple of weeks and I think after that, I'm hoping that the wheel starts turning itself.
Do you need anything from us?
Right now, we don't, other than some type of process to determine which of the no more than three of you would like to participate.
Cage match.
What'd you say?
Cage match. Arm wrestling, I don't know. You have to come up with some contest to figure that out. Of course, there are two people that aren't here, so you could just vote them off the island right now, too.
But it's also a time commitment for the meetings.
It is.
So, when, again, when we're, you already said the fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday, 4:00 to 6:30. And again, that one falls right after spring break, so we didn't want people to forget. So, we went with that Wednesday.
So, how about we do this, I can update weekend and Paul. I mean, everyone check the calendars and see if you are able to participate. I'm sure you've probably got travel and stuff, you know, kind of certain things. I'm sure you've probably got travel and stuff, you know, behind that for certain things. So just whoever from our board participates, we want to have the goal that whoever's on it can participate in all the sessions and commit, right? So the folks want to check calendars and then send me know that you want to be on it, and then we'll just maybe draw straws and do about more than three. I don't know, just, but first check the calendars and let me know if you're willing able to participate.
And we'll have the invitation formatted. Kristen will have it in our kind of presentation-ready graphic, ready to go by the end of the week here. So we'll get that out to you too, so that you can see that. So I'm really excited about it. Like I said, I think it's going to have, there'll be a lot of opportunity from the content to influence vision and mission for the district. And then as you start thinking about next round of strategic planning, I think this is going to be key content for that. I'll just share a couple of for instances with you, and I know these will make you gulp. So as I was reaching out to some of my peer superintendents who've gone through this, one district ungraded their elementary schools after this.
Wow.
That's a pretty significant change. I'm not recommending that for the tape.
What was the size of the district?
About our size. So they stopped using born-on-dating for their K-5 kids. That's an enormous change.
It is an enormous change. However, our society is not age segregated.
Another district that I talked to, they decided that they had English 9, 10, 11, and 12 were their classes that they offered. They decided that they were going to do things like offer medical terminology, and that would count for your ELA credit.
Oh, wow.
And so those are the kinds of things that may come from this kind of work.
This is, I mean, yeah, I'm excited too. This is the kind of work education needs. I mean, we're teaching in this old box that hasn't been updated, student A, student B, and we've known it for decades, and it's hard to change big systems.
It is.
This will be the fun part of the work.
Yes.
The hard part of the work will be identifying the change and committing to the change.
But this is where the 150 people come in.
Right.
Because they're your change champions across all of those in your ecosystem. And that's the point on getting the people that are committing, not just to these four meetings, but to champion the change moment forward. Because otherwise, we'll have spent $33,000, $33,500 on a pretty picture, and it'll die at the way the community comment because our community's not bought in.
Right.
And I mean, anyone from that stakeholder group could, you know, really...
Well, yeah, it helps you buy into every change following it, right? I mean, not only the vision of it, it's then any change we want to make that aligns with this, gives us the leverage to do that.
That's right. And then you have friends, you show them, I mean, it's...
It gives you allies too, because as a board, if you say, hey, we're going to start counting medical terminology as an ELA credit, and people come to community comment and say, you're nuts, well, you have, on a two-to-one ratio, 100 community members that say, I was a part of that dialogue, and this is why we're doing it, and we can mobilize them to come in and say, this is why medical terminology counts for ELA.
I'm thinking of stakeholders, have you talked to MSD group?
We haven't talked to anybody yet. We just started identifying the groups so that we can then reach out to them.
The one thing I'm seeing is that work force preparation, that's only part of all we're up to here. And I'm saying that's what Mattel does.
So one of the things we'll do too is, and we started this with our administrators already, is to do two things. One is to nominate groups from whom we should solicit a representative, and then the other one is to nominate individuals in categories. So we're already starting to do that at our administrators, and we're using a Google Doc for that, and I'll get that put together and sent out to you so that you can help us make sure that there are groups and individuals that we're considering as we go through that nomination process.
You know, one, just overall group, I think, is helpful, is identifying those just municipal other elected officials, just because those are folks who lots of people voted for. So the county and all the municipalities, just finding...
I don't think we have elected officials on the list.
Yeah, just because they end up representing, you know, they allow people to contact them and they're...
Certainly. Yep. And they vote for funding at the state hall.
I wonder too if we could set aside a few seats for people who aren't in the community, who aren't affiliated with groups, who want to self-nominate themselves.
We have a category for that, yep. And they actually, they'll reference it as they don't have kids, so they're not parents in the district. They may not be a business leader or, you know, whatnot, but exactly, so that they don't necessarily fit into one of those other groups, but have an interest and a passion.
They don't have a tunnel to be considered, but they're passionate, and they at least want a chance to say, here's why I should be considered and participate.
Yeah. By the way, it didn't take us long to get to, what was that, 108? Is that what it is? I think we've got 108 slots on the list right now, just by going through and using those categories and trying to say, how many people do we want here and here and here?
I think 150 is going to be hard.
Yeah, 100...
To cut it down.
Yeah, that's, we decided that's going to be the hard part, is whittling it down, especially after I talked to ICAD and they started rattling off the list of names, and I thought, I think we gave you like 12 business leaders, so that's too many already.
I hope you'll be just a bit controlling the participation part.
And when you set the dates, maybe that'll separate what we...
Sure. So we're excited about it.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah.
And maybe we aren't as effusive because it's 9:00.
It's all right. Matt and I will be excited for you.
Nobody?
Yeah. This has been a long time in coming. I mean, we've been talking with the ICAD community for one year now.
Oh, yeah.
And I think this has been, even this portrait of a graduate was one of the early artifacts, like this is what we're talking about.
Right.
And then having funding and cover, and it all just kind of happened actually through the July coming, huh?
Yeah. And I, you know, I think one of the things that, I mean, if you want to flip it around and find the silver lining in there, is doing it, these meetings one month apart, is what they would have suggested us doing anyway. So even if we would have started this process in September, they still, they like to do it either before or after the first of the year. They don't like those breaks in between there, so they would have recommended us to do this, even if we would have adopted this contract in October. So it just gives us a little less time on the run-up to it, but I think we've got the...
So they've done, sorry, it's very, this is an important process, coming back to Mattel and kind of their capable experience, skill set to work in a district like ours. So there are other districts that have done, we always talk about, you know, college communities are unique in terms of the engagement of our community members and all of those different things. Have they done an Iowa City-like district?
Yeah.
That was one of the questions we asked them is, you know, pretty specifically, gave them an idea about our local context.
We were unvarnished.
Talked about how many people they'd be involved and the opinions.
But then to be active, they need to hear what we're like.
Yep. And they were, to their credit, they asked that question, you know?
And it makes people better.
And we kind of unloaded and, you know, make sure we shared, you know?
They don't need just the young ones agreeing with that inexperience that was coming in. I mean, we, you know, we've got, I don't mean to say we're super special, but we have our...
We are special.
We have our, you know, our ways.
Yes.
And we need to be responsible.
I think Matt and I were pretty clear with them about that when we went through the[1635.75]